Good evening and welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of March 26, 2011. Would you please, 2012, would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the Secretary please call the roll? Commissioner Ferris?
Here.
Commissioner Turpil?
Here.
Chair Reynolds?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, special presentations, and we have to say goodbye to two Commissioners tonight. I'd like to call Councilmember Tom Glancy forward if you'd like to do the commendation and presentation to Joel Price.
Congratulations. Madam Chair, Lady Commissioners, it's a pleasure to be here tonight to honor our gentleman that served a relatively short time, but in that time, you had an opportunity to look at Joel, talk to him, and appoint him, and I was so very impressed with how succinct he can be, how direct, and how he can save the muscles of his jaw. And I think in his 10-year-old Planning Commission, he's done an absolutely awesome job, couldn't be more happy with it. So, with that, the City has a commendation in honor of Joel Price. The bulk of it is, during his service with the Commission, public hearings were held on 31 projects, including 40 applications for entitlements and legislative matters, including the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, city transportation center expansion of view apartments, Thousand Oaks Boulevard storage project, many mansions, office, Rancho Caneo specific plan amendment, and five municipal code amendments involving special use, permit findings, some improvement stores, home improvement stores, planning permit time extensions to development standards to encourage affordable housing for seniors and persons with disabilities, and on small and underutilized lots. So, with that...
Could we call Joel Price up to the podium with you?
You know what, let's do that.
Okay. Joel?
Yeah, buddy?
Thank you.
Joel, I have here the commendation. You can read it for yourself.
All right.
But commemorating this is your plaque for your service to the city. I really appreciate it, and let me tell you, we're going to wring the energy out of that dog. So, congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Joel, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you. After the remarks of how succinct that was, I felt that that was a little humor, interject a little humor there. I would like to thank Dr. Glancy for giving me the opportunity once again to serve on yet another Commission. This was truly an honor. I learned a great deal up here, and I certainly, I know that that has prepared me for the challenges that lie ahead, or at least partially prepared me for the challenges that lie ahead. I want to thank the staff, who usually sit up there, I think they're all behind me, and for the wonderful reports, the very thorough reports that were always prepared in connection with all of the hearings that I was fortunate enough to be able to sit through and vote on. I also want to thank my fellow Commissioners, who I've learned a great deal from. I've enjoyed working alongside each one of you, and well, what I found most amazing is that even though we may not have always agreed, we were always civil, we were always respective of each other's opinions, and I really appreciate that, and I think it serves not only the Commission well, but it serves as a good barometer for the public who might attend or watch these meetings at home. So, I thank you very much for that, each one of you.
Thank you, Joel. And if you'd stay at the podium, I'm sure the Commissioners have some comments they'd like to make. Nick?
Again, I think I expressed this to you personally whenever you told us you were no longer going to be on the Commission and take your next step on the Council, but I enjoyed the opportunity to work with you for the brief time on the Commission, and as you said, even though sometimes we may have come on different sides of a vote, we brought all of our opinions out and our understandings of the analysis to the table in a civil and constructive way and came up to the decisions we did. So, I look forward to working with you in different capacities now with your new step. I guess it's tomorrow evening, right?
It is.
All right, well, good luck.
Thank you, Vic. Appreciate that.
Mr. Towne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Joel, just wanted to thank you again for serving on the Commission. It was interesting to go through a number of cases with you, both small and significant, like the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. So, thank you again for your service, and we look forward to working with you on the Council.
Thank you.
Commissioner Turpil?
Yeah, Joel, we, as you know, we came on the Commission at the same time and stared at all the stack of paper, wondering how it all gets put together. I'm really excited for your position on the Council. I just have one piece of advice, though, that if I happen to sit in your chair, can we talk as to where we get the right height?
Yeah.
Anyway, congratulations. I look forward to watching you on the Council, and I know you're going to do great.
Thank you.
And Joel, I'm going to come down to the podium.
There's plenty of room.
And Joel, it's been a pleasure working with you. You know that a meeting wouldn't be complete without your M&amp;M's, so those are for you one last time, but I really appreciate working with you on the Commission. I know you'll do a wonderful job as a Councilmember, and I just wanted to say that the best man won. So, I have some flowers for your wife. Janine, would you like to come up? She's got a long road ahead of her, but I'm sure it's going to be really enjoyable. Congratulations to you, too.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it.
And the next commendation is for Barry Fisher. If you'd like to come forward, Barry?
And Barry, during your seven years of service, the Commission conducted public hearings on 347 projects, including 513 applications for entitlements and legislative matters, projects including the Oaks Mall expansion and renovation, Hyatt Hotel expansion, Centex and Thousand Oaks Market Place projects, California Lutheran University Football Stadium, Community Pool and Residence Hall, Home Depot, Belmont Village Assisted Living Facility, La Scola Hospital retrofit and expansion, Seventh Day Adventist projects, Housing Elements updates, Many Mansions and Area Housing Authority Affordable Housing Developments, La Scola Golf Course Special Events Area, McCray Ranch Visitor Center, Rancho Petrael Specific Plan and Equestrian Center, Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, and 26 municipal code amendments. And this is signed by our Mayor, Jackie Irwin, the Mayor of Thousand Oaks.
For you, Barry, and I need the plaque. And Barry, for you, we have a plaque in appreciation for your service on the Planning Commission, and you were Chair twice, January 2007 to January 2008, and February 2011 to February 2012. And of course, as I said to Joel, the meeting wouldn't be complete without M&amp;M's, and I also know you like peeps, so this is the perfect time of year to buy them for you. Oh, you like the thing, give Joel the pink ones. You can have the yellow ones now. But thank you, Barry, for your service. It's been wonderful working with you. I know you're extremely busy with your work at the county, and we look forward to seeing you around City Hall, so come back and visit. Okay? And Commissioners Ferris, would you like to make comments?
Yes, thank you. 347 applications, is that right? I'm sure you're tired, tired of all of this, too. Just, I know that you are busy, and I think I've expressed this, too. I appreciate your leadership on the Commission, not just as a Commissioner but as Chair, and I think the community benefits from your being active in it, so hopefully we'll be able to see you, you know, in another capacity, helping out the community.
Thank you.
So, thanks.
Commissioner Turpil?
Yeah, Barry, you were a great help when I first got on the Commission. It is a confusing thing to start with, but you were a real leader, and I really appreciate working with you. And I thought I had learned everything from you, but now I understand you like pink peeps, so I'm going to make a note of that for next year.
Yeah, thank you.
Mr. Towne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Barry, just wanted to thank you for your service. Seven years is really significant, over 500 projects, and, you know, a lot of important projects, as you well know, and just on behalf of the staff, we always appreciated your thoughtful consideration of the projects. You always brought good ideas to the dais and stimulated a productive conversation with staff and among the Commission itself. So, again, good luck in all of your future endeavors, and thank you so much for your service on the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
And Mr. Fisher, if you'd like to say a few words?
So formal.
I can't say Commissioner anymore, so...
Ex.
Barry, would you like to say a few words?
Well, I certainly, first of all, want to thank the previous City Councilmembers and Mayor Jackie Irwin for appointing me seven years ago. Had the privilege of working with now Councilmember Tom Glancy when I first came on the Commission, and several other former Commissioners, and it's just, it's been such an honor to be able to serve our community in this capacity. Very, very fortunate that, you know, I can come back and serve the city that I grew up in, and, you know, nice having, I guess, a fingerprint or, you know, being able to comment on how our city is going to be shaped in the future. Like to thank staff, unbelievable, our staff does not get enough credit for what they do, the amount of work that they put in hours upon hours, and the detailed reports that we have make our lives so much easier, but the city staff is seldom, or not seldom, is often overlooked, and they just do an outstanding job, and without their help, it's, as you know, it can be very tough trying to weed through all the, all the information. But I certainly enjoyed working with each of you and the former Commissioners. You know, a lot has been said about, you know, we don't always agree, well, yeah, that's why there's five votes and five individual thoughts on how things, you know, could be done, but I really enjoyed the discussion, sometimes debate, and I think at times we really came up with something better based on the discussion between all of us, and the city's better for it, and thank all of you for your service, and it's been great getting to know all of you, so thank you.
Thank you. Barry, did you want to introduce your family?
Sure. My mom, stepdad Clint, and my son Blake, who actually woke up to come down here, so thank you, Blake.
And public comments? County Clerk Mark Lynn, Ventura County Clerk, if you'd like to come forward?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioners, Mr. Towne, Mr. Norman, and esteemed staff behind. It's been about a year or so since I've been here. I'm a resident of Thousand Oaks before you asked me. About a year or so. Many of those 347 cases, I also was an appointee of Dr. Glancy, and we have our newest Councilmember here that replaced me, and I wanted to offer you, Joel, congratulations. You thought you were escaping, but I guess the games really began. I'm here just to congratulate and recognize the fine work of Barry. We went through many, many hearings together, big and small, and for folks that don't know what all of you do to get prepared for these hearings, the city staff does the lion's work of putting it together, and then we hear testimony for folks. The only ones that really know how hard we work are the ones that actually have something that can be for us, but for the thousands and thousands and thousands of pages that we've read, and for the folks that we hopefully have made happy by the projects that were approved, I just want to say, Barry, nobody was more prepared at these meetings than you. You were succinctly eloquent, I think is probably the politically correct thing to say here, and on behalf of a resident and a fellow former Planning Commissioner in this city, I want to thank you for a job well, well done. Thank you very much.
Mr. Nick Kidway, if you'd like to come forward?
I begin in the name of God, who is most manificial, most merciful. My name is Nick Egbal-Kidway. I'm resident of Newberry Park, Director of Concerned Citizens of Thousand Oaks for a long time, Honorable Chair, Planning Commissioners, Honorable Distinguished County Clerk, former Supervisor Shallow. Today is a historic day in our nation's history. I hope, if you have not heard the arguments before the Supreme Court regarding Obamacare, you will hear it. That's democracy in action, that's why people flock to this nation. Unfortunately, unfortunately, I cannot say the same thing about this August chamber. It reeks of anti-democratic fervor, and it's a shame that the citizens are not participating in it in the way that they should. I don't know the reasons, but hopefully things will change. The appointments for the Planning Commission, for the Council, I wanted to speak under public comments, the timer is not on, I don't have that luxury generally.
We have two public comments tonight, so I am timing you.
All right, well, okay, then, I will speak under the second. I will just wrap up and say that I congratulate the two gentlemen, Commissioner Barry Fisher and former Commissioner Ferris, for being elected, and wish them well. I know it's a thankless job, doesn't pay well, and, but somebody's got to do it, so I congratulate them for stepping forward, and I wish them best in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. We have two public comments on our agenda, and I think that I've changed your card now to five, from 4E to five. So, we are going to now break and have a short reception in the lobby, and then we will come back for our meeting and the public comments.
Okay.
Okay? And so, if you'd all join us in the lobby, we'd appreciate it.
Okay, welcome back to the Planning Commission meeting of March 26, 2012. And at this time, I was remiss in not welcoming Mr. Chris Norman back with us tonight as our sitting Assistant City Attorney on the Commission.
Thank you, and it's just going to be for one meeting, unfortunately.
Oh, okay, well.
But thank you.
We missed you, and welcome back tonight. And I'll resume the meeting with public comments. Mr. Nick Kidway, if you'd like to come forward, state your name and city of residence, and you have five minutes.
Nick Igbal Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, Director Concerned, citizen of Thousand Oaks, honorable and distinguished three Planning Commissioners and staff and supervisor Shillo. Good evening. Today is indeed a historic day to see democracy in action. The Supreme Court held the first day of hearings on the Obamacare issue, and I hope that you will listen to it. One of the things that I would like to draw your attention in that this body, as well as the City Council hearings, are completely unfair and un-American, and I make that charge based on law. The interesting thing about the Supreme Court hearing is that both sides get exact amount of time. So if you cut people's time for two minutes or something like that, the issue is not just reducing the time for citizens, but staff presentations as well as the applicant time. In this body, like for the auto mall issue, staff gave a one-hour presentation, and then you give 15 minutes to the applicant, and then cut people to two minutes. It's completely unfair, and it's really—I'm glad that Commissioner Ferris, the author of the five-minute public comments, is sitting there, that you would change that. And City of Ventura, I discovered, already has it. They limit staff to a certain amount, and that's one of the reasons people don't participate, because the meetings just drag on and on. I want to draw your attention again that one of the reasons a Planning Commissioner was removed was Tina Grumney, because she voted against the ugly and dangerous auto mall sign. That's one of the reasons we have another fresh Commissioner sitting on the dais, whom I respect, but it's not democratic, it's not the American way, it's not what makes Thousand Oaks people proud. In fact, the applicants for the council position were told that Mr. Price was being appointed based on his experience. What experience, I mean? And what did he accomplish? I mean, two appointed positions by the same council member? Planning Commissioner for just a few meetings? Mr. Barry Fisher's 500 meetings that he had attended in seven years? How many meetings have I attended in 20 years? Well, they don't count, because I don't—I'm not a rubber stamp for staff or special interests. And how can somebody gain experience when they are not appointed? And for the record, that's one of the reasons I apply every time and get rejected. And I have applied since 1994, so—I mean, I cannot even keep track of the number of applications. In fact, even a small little social services funding committee is being played politics with, and not only was I not appointed with experience, but the other lady who was the chair in the past and who has made a great contribution was not appointed, because the role of bodies like this is basically to go along with staff and not question staff. That's what it is around the whole country. And anybody that comes and reads the stuff and makes—tries to shake the boat is just basically kicked out. To have the same three names for three council members in the appointment process—I know a little bit about statistics, but I'm not an expert, but I have friends who are experts, so—and Google is our friend, so—they did a statistical analysis of three council members having the top three same names out of 17 applications. Mr. Ferris would—scientists would like to know. 3,352 is the odd. It's completely unrealistic, it's completely rigged, you don't get those odds. In fact, if you were looking at experience—I mean, I have the experience on this side, but the chair of the commission was the applicant, and she was not on any of the lists. That's completely rigged, and it's also biased. And somebody wrote to me, he said, "Well, you know, have you noticed they appoint the people who are similar to them?" I mean, people who are bureaucrats, government people, et cetera. And so even the thing of not looking seriously at a woman was not considered. So it's really sad, and the cities that were considered were not applicable to Thousand Oaks. It's very sad that staff even plays politics, and that's why I asked the citizens to come forward and get involved. Thank you, Chair, for letting me speak, I really appreciate your hard work.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. We'll continue on with the agenda, written comments, announcements, and continuances. Mr. Towne.
Thank you, Madam Chair, but I had nothing at this time, thank you.
Thank you. And will the clerk open the public hearing? 7A, please.
Hearing advertised as required by law is hereby open to consider Agenda Item 7A regarding case LU 2012-70015, SPA 2012-70017, and SPA 2012-70019. Applicant: City of Thousand Oaks. Request: To amend land use element of the general plan from commercial residential to institutional. Amend the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan to delete the subject property and amend the adjacent Civic Arts Plaza specific plan to include it, and to adopt land use regulations consistent with public or institutional use. Location: 2.8 acres of land located at the southwest corner of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Dallas Drive.
Good evening, Mr. Alawani, if you'd like to give the staff report.
Yeah, good evening, thank you, ma'am. Members of the Commission, I'd like to direct your attention to monitors for staff's presentation. Again, as mentioned, the request before you tonight is regarding the West Side property, which is on southwest corner of Thousand Oaks Boulevard and Dallas Drive, and there are three cases associated with that. And the first one is to amend the general plan amendment—the general plan designation from commercial residential to institutional. The second amendment is to the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, and the intent of that is to detach the West Side property from that plan area and attach it to the Civic Arts Plaza specific plan area. Here's the location of the West Side property. Again, it includes five parcels, and there are four existing businesses along the frontage of Thousand Oaks Boulevard, and the remaining site is vacant. Here's an area map showing the location of the West Side property in relationship to Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan and Civic Arts Plaza specific plan. The West Side property, again, as mentioned, consists of five parcels totaling 2.8 acres, and it was acquired by Redevelopment Agency, and now it's owned by the city in 2010, 2011. And the idea behind that support development, that will be compatible with the Civic Arts Plaza. Civic Arts Plaza specific plan was adopted in 1989, which established development standards for the Civic Arts Plaza, which includes the profit commercial and the government-public side of it, and was amended three times. The fourth amendment is proposed for the change in parking standards for the lakes, which is going to the City Council next month for consideration. The Boulevard specific plan was adopted in 2011, last year, and established design and development standards for development along the Boulevard. And there was a companion general plan land use amendment with the specific plan would change the land use designation within the specific plan to commercial residential designation. The proposed specific plan amendment, there's some reasons behind it. The Regional Arts Museum interested in locating their museum, they were looking for a site along the Civic Arts Plaza within or next to it, so they were interested in an area adjacent to the Civic Arts Plaza, and they preferred the West Side property as a location for their project. The museum is considered institution and land use and public use. Current site is, again, as mentioned, is considered as designated commercial residential under the general plan, which is the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, and the institutional designation would be the appropriate designation for the site. Measure E, originally—excuse me—when the West Side's property was designated commercial prior to the adoption of Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, with the adoption of the Boulevard plan, it was designated commercial residential. Again, because it was originally commercial, 2.8 acres of that land, when it's changed to institutional, would be—that acreage would be a reduction to the 1996 baseline that was adopted by the public with regard to Measure E. And because of that, the 2.8 acre will be added to the credit balance that we have of commercial acreage, which will be 3.68 acres. And it's up to the City Council to decide if they—if that acreage could be used within the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan or citywide through a general plan amendment. Both amendments before you tonight, again, it focuses on the West Side property, and it is within the Boulevard specific plan and adjacent to the Civic Arts Plaza. And the amendment, again, the intent of it is to detach the property from one specific plan and add it to the other specific plan because of the intended purpose of the site, which is for commercial—I mean, public use. There are four general pla—four subareas within Civic Arts Plaza specific plan. Subarea C, which is public and governmental facilities, that's where this West Side property will be added to, and it will be C1 under the subarea C. And as shown in the specific plan document, it's in the corner in there, and it will be part of public and governmental facilities, subarea C. And museum will be added as a permitted use under Civic Arts Plaza. There are three development standards that staff believes need to be modified within the Civic Arts of the specific plan, and will be only for the West Side property, for future development. Those development standards are similar to Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan, and they include sidewalk width currently under the cap, it's only 10 feet, which is the current existing right-of-way, but with the West Side, it's going to be 20 feet, which is similar, again, to Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. Building setback under the cap is only 35 feet landscape—it's 35 landscape setback. Under the West Side will be from 0 to 15 feet from the edge of the sidewalk. Building height under the cap, the maximum's 35 feet for a distance of 150 feet from the property line, and then after that is 75 feet beyond the 150-foot setback. For the West Side, staff recommends that to use the Boulevard specific line guidelines, 50 feet average maximum, not to exceed three stories. Again, those standards that will be modified is to retain the existing standard under the Boulevard specific plan in order to encourage the pedestrian-friendly environment along the Boulevard, and also to create a transition between the Civic Arts Plaza and future development of the block that will be under the specific plans, will be a transition between the built environment here at the cap and future development along Thousand Oaks Boulevard by having the same—similar standard would be easier transition between the two areas. A negative declaration was prepared for these amendments, and there are no—and they do not have any significant effect on the environment. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval. They're coming to the City Council approval over the three amendments based on the findings in the staff report. Staff will be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Commissioner Ferris?
Thank you. Mr. Alawani, so you mentioned, and again, I guess, one of the purposes for this is to ensure that there is a good transition between the properties that are—have already been developed within the Civic Arts Plaza specific plan and then the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan. Is that right?
Correct.
Is there something in the amended specific plan that actually calls that out as the purpose for why we're using some of the Thousand Oaks specific plan standards within there? Main reason I'm thinking is that if there—when it gets to a point of actually developing it, that when the Commissioner, the council actually looks at the project, that they don't just look at the standards, but they look at the purpose of whether—you know, meaning the letter of the law, but the spirit of it, of what we're intending to do? Is that something that's either currently in here as recommended or something we can do?
I guess it's up to the Planning Commission if they want to add some language to those standards to clarify. There's a heading that says "West Side Property Only," we could definitely add some language that would affect. The reason for these amendments is to have a transition between Civic Arts Plaza development and future development along T.O. Boulevard.
Yeah, I'm looking at—is it page 15 of that specific plan? "West Side Property Shown as Area C1, Et Cetera." I'm just wondering if it might be wise for us to make sure that we put that in. That's the reason why they're in here, so that when we judge it, we can judge whether the transition's in effect of one, not merely meeting those standards.
Mr. Towne, did you want to add some comments?
Just to augment Mr. Alawani's response and Commissioner Ferris's suggestion, that would be the appropriate place to provide it. It's not otherwise spelled out in these changes to the specific plans. I would recommend adding language at the end of the first sentence, and this is in bold and underlined on page 15, to say, "Generally, the West Side property shown in this area is C1 on Figure 4, shall have the following development standards in order to provide an appropriate transition in the built environment from the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan to the Civic Arts Plaza specific plan."
That would be perfect. Okay, yeah, I appreciate that, because I think that's one thing, I know that is the purpose of it, but you never know when the project will come along, and sometimes then the purpose gets lost whenever we're reviewing it. Appreciate that, thank you. I did have one more question, and maybe Mr. Norman might be the best person to help out here. I'm reading on page—actually, I'm not quite sure which page it is. It's eight on the bottom, page six on the top. It's talking about the Measure E implications of the general plan amendment, and one of the sentences, it says, sort of refers to, it says, "They adopted a companion general plan land use amendment, which allocated 9.18 acres of commercially designated land." The sentence I wanted some clarification on was said, "There was no adjustment to the dwelling unit credit balance, because the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan capped the amount of dwelling units to the amount of dwelling units authorized." If I remember correctly, when we—the Commission looked at it, the general plan amendment, it was a bit broad, but I think since it went from the Commission to the council, there's actually a very specific limit in the general plan amendment. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. I believe it was capped to 289 dwelling units, if memory serves.
Okay, so I guess what I'm trying to figure is, my understanding is, it's because we cap things in the general plan amendment that was approved, not necessarily the specific plan. I know they're coupled, I know one needs the other, but it really is the general plan amendment that is capping the amount of dwelling.
Right, and I'll just add that the specific plan also caps it, so they both do. Correct.
Absolutely, okay. I appreciate that, that helps me in just reconciling that. Also, I guess in the next paragraph, it says, "Since the original designation of the West Side property was commercial prior to the adoption"—it doesn't really matter what it was prior to that, right? It just matters what we're looking at now and what it's going to change to, right?
That's correct. That same logic wouldn't apply to the residential, but it does for the commercial.
Absolutely, that's what I get, is that 2.8 acres comes off the books in commercial, now goes in the credit, but the dwelling units, because of the way the wording of the general plan amendment is, they can go anywhere within the specific plan, and so it doesn't affect the change there, is that right?
That's correct.
Okay, that's cool. If I remember, I'm going to want to have a comment, maybe it's later on in Planning Commission comments, just about sort of a tabular view of where the residential units are in the city, where the commercial acreage is in the city, so that when we have—we get the—we get this on a case-by-case basis, but sometimes it's good to just see a similar format of the effect of the general plan amendment as we move forward Measure E-wise.
One thing that we have been doing, when the general plan amendment goes before council, there is a tabulation that is done at the time that general plan is approved.
Yeah, it would be nice to see that at the Commission level, too, so that everybody's seeing the same thing, so. All right, thanks a lot for that.
Commissioner Chappell, no questions? Okay. With that, I'll—I have two cards on this item. Mr. Frank Shillo, if you'd like to come forward and state your name and city of residence, and you have five minutes.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and Commissioners, staff. My name is Frank Shillo, and I live in Thousand Oaks. I wanted to support the zone change to institutional. I think it makes just common sense. I think anyone in the city looking at it, when you look at the City Hall, the performing arts, you have the really beginning of a downtown area, and to have that be dissipated with property that's so valuable as the one that you just bought recently, doesn't make any sense. So the institutional, I have to say, is—the institutional zoning makes a lot of sense to me personally for another reason, that I am the chairman of the task force that's determined to build a regional art museum. So it's going to be a while before we get there, but we're working on it diligently, and this would make a perfect location for the regional art museum to combine both the visual arts and the performing arts in one location, making it really an art center unsurpassed between L.A. and San Francisco. So with that, that's—I do support the change. If there's any questions.
Any questions at the speaker? And thank you.
Thank you very much.
The next speaker is Mr. Nick Kidway. If you'd like to come forward, state your name and city of residence, and you also have five minutes.
I'm being—Nick Kidway, resident of Newberry Park, Director Concerned, citizen of Thousand Oaks, Honorable Chair Daryl Reynolds. Nick Kidway. Planning Commissioners Fantasyland in Disneyland is great, but to play with tax dollars as monopoly money is a cardinal sin. The state of California realized this, and on February 1st this year eliminated the rogue redevelopment agencies, of which ours was a prime example of a bad apple. If TO TV can show the business card of my friend and mentor, Chris Norby. I belong to his group for 10 years. He held a meeting of the group in the Thousand Oaks Library 12 years ago, and it was instrumental in passing this great legislation, which is an example to the whole nation, and is being replicated right now in other states. ABX 27, I believe, is the one, was enacted in 2010, and it said that no changes would be allowed in redevelopment agency projects, no purchases as—to shelter money from the state for these rogue agencies. This property—or these properties on this side of me, on Thousand Oaks Boulevard, were purchased afterwards. The auto mall parking issues, as well as the changes in the lakes for Mr. Crusoe, were done way after that. And the issue—you can have all the meetings that you can have, we can wear nice suits and ties, look like it's all legal and proper, but there's an oversight board that is going to be formed and functioning in June, two, three months from now. And all these issues will come before them. And for God's sake—I mean, I pray to God that justice will be done, and the taxpayers will be made whole, and these projects will be turned back, and they will have to sell the land. I mean, you folks have done such a poor job, there's just one nice building that a gentleman has refurbished next to this empty lot next door. It's owned by a dentist from Iran. I called him up on the day of the hearing, year and a half ago, never heard of the purchase by the city. And he will be—I mean, what will happen to him? I mean, now you don't even have eminent domain. If TO TV will show that—I mean, I just discovered that in my archives, that's from the year 2000. This is what was proposed for the lakes. I mean, it's just such a shame that these things keep happening. There's a cinemax of 2,400 seats was proposed at the lakes. This is the Discovery Center. I mean, that is what was sold, that kids will be able to enjoy the Discovery Center, and that's why we need to propose, support this. Not that Mr. Crusoe will get the—steal our land for a dollar a year. And if I—we—and the reports that he provides are redacted. I mean, and there's no response—in fact, the city attorney has given a response, and I have asked for clarification, it's been over a month, nothing. I mean, we are just treated like, what, serfs? I guess that's a good word. This museum—I mean, I admire Mr. Shillo, of course, I mean, he has a lifetime of service, but I have—I couldn't find my three-ring binder on the museum that I was given. It was supposed to be in front of this building. And then all of a sudden, without any discussions, the—it was changed, off the record. In fact, the Commissioner would like to know, there's—the museum people have a free office, I think it's free, next, right here off the lobby. You had your cake and all that right there. Supervisor was kicked out because she couldn't afford the rent, but I believe they have free office. I mean, is that a gift of public funds or what? I mean, that should be brought up to the oversight board also. I know that's beyond their jurisdiction, I guess, the grand jury might be better. But I'm just concerned that—it's great that we can build it, but the operating costs, just like the theaters, we are going to be stuck with it. I hope not. I wish Mr. Shillo the best, and the committee too, and hope we—other cities will come forward and help us out and truly make it regional rather than— forward and help us out and truly make it regional rather than just Thousand Oaks. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. Kidway. We'll go back to staff. Does staff have anything else to add?
No additional comments from staff.
Okay. Then, any other questions of staff? Then I'll close the public hearing. Now's the time for a motion deliberation on the item, and this is a recommendation to the city council. Commissioner Ferris?
I will, I will go ahead and make a motion to go ahead and approve this. Let's see if I can do it and get everything on the record. So, recommendation is that we recommend to the city council approval of the negative declaration number two eighty-five, general plan amendment LU two thousand twelve dash seventy oh one five, specific arts plaza specific plan amendment SPA two thousand twelve dash seven zero zero one seven, amendment number five, and Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan amendment SPA two thousand twelve dash seven zero zero one nine, amendment number one, and include the recommended findings. In addition, the language, I believe it's to the Civic Arts Plaza specific plan, recommending the, as Mr. Towne had specified verbatim, we'll go back to the transcripts and get that, but I think including that would be a good addition to this amendment. I think that this is a great opportunity to be able to designate the appropriate land use for this area as a transition between Thousand Oaks Boulevard and the specific arts plaza, and hopefully we'll get the opportunity to have a great museum on that property and serving the community. So I'm, you know, proud to support the amendment, and hopefully we'll see something very good soon.
Commissioner Chappell?
Yes, I'm going to support the motion. I think this absolutely just makes a lot of sense, especially with the proximity of this piece of land next to the Civic Arts Plaza. I think it's a very wise move. I particularly like the way Mr. Towne on Commissioner Ferris's suggestion added that particular language to the T O Boulevard specific plan amendment, so the, I think it's a good thing, and I'm going to support the motion.
Thank you, and I also will support the motion. I really look forward to the museum coming, and I wish the best of luck to the committee that they are able to get the funds for the art museum. It's something that's really needed in this community. And so with that, any final comments to the motion, then please vote. Motion passed, three zero. Thank you. We'll continue on with community developer department reports and referrals. Mr. Towne?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just to bring to the attention of the commission on page thirty-nine of your packet this evening to note that we do have a hearing scheduled for April ninth in two weeks, so please keep that on your calendars. And then as far as items that you have considered that are going to be considered by the city council, the East Side property here at the Civic Arts Plaza, the commercial development is scheduled to be considered by the city council on April tenth. That had to do with the parking ratios and other related development standards. And then also wanted to inform the commission that the T-Mobile wireless case, which you considered on March twelfth at your last meeting at Park State B at Des Vientos Ranch, has been appealed to the city council, and so that will be scheduled appropriately. And that's all I had at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Minutes of the March twelfth, two thousand and twelve meeting, could I? Commissioner Ferris?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Please vote. Motion passed, three zero. Are there any AB twelve thirty-four reports? Okay, thank you. Commission comments. Commissioner Chappell?
Well, I think, wrong button. I think it was a good send-off for Commissioner Fisher and now council member Joel Price. It was nice to see them here again, and, you know, I look forward to the new appointments and look forward to working on the commission in the future, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Ferris?
Yes, again, as I mentioned, I think from the past case, it would be nice, I think, and helpful, if we had like a tabular view of sort of where we are, the effect of this amendment, and kind of where it sits. If it's not too much trouble, and we'll see how much work, I guess, it is, it would be nice to see from nineteen ninety-six, when measure E was approved, the list of the general plan amendments that have been approved and how that affected it, so we could see where we got, how we got to where we currently are. It just would give us maybe a history of, you know, it's about sixteen years now, I guess, so it would give us a history of kind of where we are and how each of them has affected it, and maybe give us some balance, just to see on how any future amendment would do. Like I said, if it's not too much, that would be nice. I don't know if it's too much work.
Thank you. And I'd just like to say that it was a nice evening, and sad to say goodbye to Commissioner Fisher and Price. Barry Fisher and I came on this commission the same night we were sworn in, so I didn't realize I'd been to that many meetings, but it was very nice. And I want to thank staff, Lilia and Laura, for the reception that you planned outside. That was very nice of you, and I appreciate you taking the time to do that. And also, another note, that Mayor Erwin had come down previously to thank Commissioner Fisher for his service, and she's up at the California Assembly receiving an award from our California Assembly. That's why she isn't here tonight. I don't know if that's common knowledge, but it's well-deserved. I don't know if it was nominated by Assemblyman Jeff Gurrell, but I know they present a woman as Assemblywoman type of award, so. And with that, if there are no further comments, we'll adjourn the meeting to six thirty P.M. on April ninth, two thousand and twelve, and I hope everyone has a wonderful holiday season. Good night.